Morning, good morning, good morning.
Morning.
It was Steve's start of three. I'm pretty sure I got this off. I gotta read the bullets.
Randy's plow on the front of this pickup. This is a pull for Randy's plow.
It's the newest one you can buy.
Geez. Take a bite, you don't.
Diane was first day they stopped.
Okay, okay, yep.
But I don't know any more about it than I know about my other.
Randy, mine arrives to.
Oh, wow. Yeah, they were really backlogged on.
What is it?
Ice seventeen.
Is that about a two thousand dollar phone?
I don't know. Or ice, decided to use this give it.
Mine's coming and it'll be here next month. It's a month behind apparently. So I'm trying not to break mine because I gotta turn mine back in to them.
You're okay with that? Sounds yours.
Six years old. You have to dial? Hello?
Don't dial up.
I know mine looks like yours, like your sad old dude, but the guy goes home and then I have a little early curve. Now everything that's added there, I gotta redo. You know, if you use it, some pay for some, does that happen? They don't do that. It's all paper.
That's why I'm gonna.
Make sure and back it up before you get your new. Reserve, reserve yours. Is that an iPhone two? What is that? It's so small.
It's not a flip phone.
It's not.
That's what it's not. It's not over a flip phone, no.
All right. Hey, as long as they make.
A lot of days I wish I had that flip phone back.
They work really good as little computers, but not so good for phones. Wow.
You're gonna be able to give it up. It's hard.
I'm just learning how to run mine. I don't know why should I do that.
There you go.
I promise I think I can remember all of my passwords if I change phones. Do I have to upload them all to the cloud?
You use the password manager?
Ah, yes.
But you have to have a password to get into the password manager. Oh, okay. I just try one of seventeen different passwords and whichever one works. Yeah. Or you have one more attempt before it locks you out.
I was cleaning out my desk the other day looking for something and then I found a list of all my passwords. Well, that's where it's at.
All right. Good morning, everybody. It is nine AM. We'll call the meeting of the Cottington County Commissioners to order. Today is Tuesday, October seventh, and we'll begin with our Pledge of Allegiance. We'll have Kerry from the Human Service Agency lead us.
The nations certified by the United States of America and the Republic, which stands one nation under God, meaningful with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a reminder to please silence your cell phone so they do not disrupt the meeting here this morning and then don't forget to turn them back on following today's meeting. Call for public comments can be submitted in person or via telephone at six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or by calling eight eight two six two nine seven. Commissioners, any conflict of interest items?
No.
Need for an action to approve the October seventh agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Schwer. Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number five. This is action to approve the September twenty third minutes.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by McElhaney. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to number six. This is action to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash fifteen, the Cottington County five year highway and bridge improvement plan. We'll get our highway superintendent Randy Fall be up here with us this morning. Morning, Randy.
Good morning. Sure to cooperate here this morning. This was brought to your attention a couple, three weeks ago already. And this is just the finalization of it after we had the public meeting and there was no questions or comments at that point in time. So we're just asking to have this signed.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Gable, second by McElhaney. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, do you want to?
Commissioner Gable.
Uh, can I just say what the different diamonds mean since we could.
Yes.
See, now.
The diamonds are the different bridges that are in various repair and the colors are associated, excuse me, associated with the year that we're going to work on them. So yellow will be worked on next year. Red will be worked on in twenty twenty seven. Any that are in blue, which is not the case here, would be in twenty eight. Purple would be completed in twenty twenty nine and the green ones in twenty thirty, giving us our five year plan. Um, this is up for grant approval on these bridges. So we're trying to get funding for these bridges and that's why we have this five year plan put in place, trying to get this in line.
Get it taken care of. All right. So we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Randy, let's go ahead and jump down real quick to uh, not item number ten for you since you're up here. It's discussion possible action to approve purchase of a snowplow for the highway superintendent pickup.
Correct.
And we have those quotes commissioners in front of you should have been given those this morning. For the estimate from Steve's world.
Correct.
Go ahead, Randy.
Uh, with the purchase of my new pickup this year and the fact that myself and Lynn Solberg, my assistants, check all the roads first thing in the morning. We're the first ones out there to see some of these small finger drifts and stuff like that or a bridge uh, buttments that might have some snow on them. So it'd be beneficial to us to have snowplows on our trucks. If not having to send out a full sized truck just to clear something minor. Um, the reason I've only got the one estimate from Steve's world is because we currently have a truck with a Western plow on it. So the electronics, the mounts and everything would match up with this brand new plow. So the estimate is from Steve's road for um, eleven thousand two hundred ninety one dollars and sixty nine cents. Um, talking with Steve earlier this spring, right after the truck was purchased, there's already a seven hundred dollar difference uh, decrease at this point. He says it does fluctuate throughout the year. The closer you get to the snow, obviously you're gonna pay a little bit for it. So this is just a little preemptive at this point.
This is budgeted?
Yes.
Randy, what is a shoe kit?
Shoe kit, I'm sorry.
Oh, shoe kit. Okay. All right. Well, that makes sense.
I have to go on the grill. So I apologize.
Okay, so we have a uh, motion by Johnson to approve and a second by Commissioner Gable. Any further discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do you have anything else on here?
I do, but.
Yeah, you have item number nine.
Correct.
Sorry about that. Don't get over that. This discussion possible action authorized the chair to sign a um, memorandum of understanding for shared roads between Cottington County and the city of Watertown. And Randy.
Correct. Um. Allison Backman also wants to get involved with this due to the fact there was a question on one of the statements that was on the memorandum.
Who's behind the Randy?
Morning.
Morning. Currently there is no memorandum of understanding, so this will be a new item.
This is, this is a brand new item. Um, as Randy discussed, um, my suggestion is that we enter into executive session to discuss my concerns at the end of today's meeting and then um, hold off on possible action until next week.
Okay.
So that's, that's my um, suggestion. I would say that it meets the ongoing contract negotiations.
Is there, there's no time element or time concern with this at all?
They would like to have a time by the end of the month if possible.
Okay.
I just need to talk to Lisa Carico and I'll explain them in the exact session.
Okay, no problem. Okay, all right. We'll move that to exec. Thank you.
But I'm sorry, when did you say, when did you say that needed to be approved?
Awesome. By the end of the month.
Yes.
All right, let's back up and uh, go with this to item number seven. This is discussion with Kerry Johnston of the Human Service Agency. She's the Executive Director regarding the opioid settlement funds.
How are you?
Sure. Money, 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 money.
So yes, I'm Kerry Johnston. I'm the Executive Director of the Human Service Agency. Um, and I'm here to discuss um, the opioid settlement funds that are channeled through the state, to the counties and to the cities. Um, I sent you all a letter indicating what the opioid database, um, settlement database indicates has been allocated for Cottington County. Um, what we would use that thirty five thousand dollar request for, and I mean, it's significant to know that's not necessarily county money. It comes from those settlement dollars is to help fund our MAT program. MAT is medication assisted treatment. And because settlement comes from people that were addicted to opioids, um, many payers had to pay as a result of those settlements. Um, some being the founders of the opioid drug themselves. Um, because people were wrongfully um, prescribed that medication to the degree that they became severely addicted. And what we have found through studies is that using um, a medication called Suboxone can offset cravings. Um, it works with brain chemistry. It's it's a medical complicated um, situation, but it is um, helps people that are addicted to opioids transition off of that addiction. It helps with cravings. It it offsets side effects and it is an intense um, medication program. So the way we do it at the Human Service Agency is we don't just prescribe that medication. We have it as part of a program. An individual that maybe has an opioid addiction would meet first with the drug and alcohol counselor. They would decide if this was the route that we wanted to go. They would then see our prescriber. Um, right now it's just Kerry Dilla who does this medication. Um, we would, the drug and alcohol provider meets with the client and the prescriber each week because there is such a huge accountability with it as well. So we give them UAs to make sure they're taking the medication, make sure we do medication counts to make sure no one is selling the medication and they have to come in frequently um, to be seen um, for that purpose. So we are unable, of course, to then like double bill if a person had Medicaid or insurance. And I have two prescribers or I'm sorry, two providers in that same appointment. Only one of them can bill for that service because you just can't bill two people doing the same thing or similar services. Um, so that will help offset that. It will also help with anyone who cannot afford the medication. Um, a lot of people come to us without insurance. There is a medication um, prescription program through the um, opioid settlement dollars too that offsets some of that, but not for every client that might have a large copay or if they don't have um, insurance at all, then um, they are stuck with a portion of that medication as well. Another unique thing about the Human Service Agency is Kerry Dilla is the only prescriber in the state, I believe, that prescribes the injection of Sublicade, which is the injectionable of Suboxone, which is um, it's more effective because it's an injection, but it's more expensive. It's over two thousand dollars and you need it maybe once, maybe twice a month until the cravings um, dissipate some. Some people are on the a MAT program only until they titrate down and they feel capable of coping with a lot of the um, cravings and um, sobriety itself. Other times they might be on it for quite a long time until they just have those skills and they feel um, more medically stable to transition off of it. And so I'm here to respectfully ask for the money that has been allocated to the county for um, to offset the opioid crisis.
Okay.
I stand by for any questions.
Commissioner Gable.
I mean, and this is a nice concrete thing. Um, the, and then just in the context, so this I think would fit into the context of what we're talking about. Say we'll restart and then um, you know, the uh, House of Brands and everything. So, so so, so I guess we just need to put this on agenda at some future time. And then also to figure out a way to kind of get it into that other conversation that we're having in the restart world.
So right now this is just for discussion on today's agenda, but we can add it to the agenda for next week?
That works.
Yeah. Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I think so. I don't, we just touch base with, with uh, Angie and Sarah and stuff and so.
Okay.
But um, that's her, the welfare.
Yeah.
So we, the uh, let's see, um. How, what kind, what kind of timeframe is, are you looking at this? Is it something you can implement really quickly?
We currently have sixteen people on our MAT program that get weekly services. And so it would be anything that we would, we would take right away. We are trying to work hard to open more evaluation slots in our prescriber's schedule and right now she does have a spot um, every Monday for a new evaluation. The way to get into services, if you feel like you want MAT services is to schedule an evaluation with their drug and alcohol, one of our drug and alcohol providers, they will work you into that schedule. So I mean, as soon as you all felt like you were ready to talk about it a little more about it, but absolutely we would take it whenever. So we're seeing more and more uh, people coming out of prison that um, like the prison will maybe start them on a MAT program and then they have nowhere to transition them to because not every community provides this service. Um, there is project recovery, I think, out of Sioux Falls. That often is just a prescription. They don't have a program. They don't have accountability. They don't have the counseling associated with it. So.
And how, how successful would you say this is? I mean, just looking at things nationwide, statewide.
I would say it's been hugely successful. I don't have a good um, statistic for you, but overall um, it's been one of our most successful programs, I think, in fighting the addiction um, crisis. They're also, I mean, on a side note unrelated to this, coming up with medications that can offset cravings for alcohol as well, that have proven to be successful. And so I am hopeful that that will take off too. Separate from opioid money, but medication does play a role in addiction big time.
Nice. Any more questions? If not, we'll get it on the agenda.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time, you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move down to item number eight and this is the four H educator. Jody.
Hello.
Morning.
Hi, Johnny.
Well, happy new four H year. It started October first. Um, today's treat Tuesday for our four H week. So I brought you treats today. Um, our new members can enroll now since October first started our new year. Um, members need to re-enroll if they're already a member. Um, our clover buds are ages five, six and seven, and then our big four H members, I say, are eight to eighteen. So it is National Four H Week and our Cottington County Four H Youth are ready, beyond ready. That's kind of our theme this week. They're beyond ready for life, beyond ready to lead. Their award applications for four H awards are due to our office this Friday and then our four H recognition event again is a Sunday, October twenty sixth at two o'clock in the North Expo and then I'll start clover buds again in November. So it just kind of goes on the cycle, but I'm ready to have a shooting sports meeting here soon to, to plan our shooting sports program again too. They're just kind of finished up with their fall shoot in September and then we'll start over with archery and BB gun and air pistol rifle. So.
Ready.
As long as you're here, I did get a an email. I don't know if the other commissioners got that email from one of the four H members in reference to the old ICE hockey facility. And uh, I, I've, I've always, I don't know where we're at with that facility.
I know they have a committee that's working on, on talking about.
Working on it, but uh, I still think it'd be the perfect place for shooting sports.
Yeah, I think one of our um, shooting sports um, volunteers is on that committee to, to kind of help do some planning with that. So I, nothing is setting concrete yet.
Do whatever we can to move it along.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Jody.
All right. Veteran service. Come on up. Morning.
Morning.
Fisher.
Morning.
So the update for October for the Veteran Service Office, excuse me, this is Jay Roberts.
Yeah, I know Jay. Jay Roberts. Thank you, Jay.
Um, the update for the month of October. We're coming in with one hundred sixty two open claims. We have seventy, seventy four pending claims with the VA and two hundred and sixty three completed for the year. For Hamlin County, we have twenty open claims with eleven pending action and twelve completed for the year. Currently we're working fourteen, with fourteen veterans outside of our county with nineteen previously completed. So a little update on that. As we all know, we have Eric Lewis as the Deputy Veteran Service Office, new, not fully trained, not fully capable of submitting claims to the VA for veterans. So the office in itself is a little bit reduced in its capability. And um, so as veterans are coming in from other counties, we're now asking them to go back to their county. Just to be able to provide a better service to the people of our county in Hammond County who we are responsible for. Um, we don't like to turn these people away from the other counties, but in, in all essence, they have somebody in their county to take care of them. And they need to leverage that with their commissioners if that person's not doing what they've been asked to do for them. So that's what we're doing currently. I know it may not be received well by some of the veterans, but it's to help manage our resources in our county here. So just an update on what's happening there. From last month to this month, a monthly increase of what we've received, uh, our veterans have received fourteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And then a total for the years, one hundred and twenty five thousand four hundred and sixty three dollars. Um, and then for retro payments for the last month, um, ninety one thousand five hundred and sixty four with a total of one million for the year, one million, one hundred and ninety nine thousand and sixty six dollars. So we're doing quite well. As I stated last month, we're, we're ahead of last year by about a quarter. Okay, that, we, we uh, brought five veterans down to Sioux Falls to their VA appointments, doctor appointments. And we currently have two transports planned for this, this current month. Eric and I attended our state training conference, which gave us more opportunity to learn different processes for submitting claims to the VA as well as them, you know, making sure that we're trained, which is their, their job. South Dakota Department of Veterans Affairs job. We've had a couple of people stop in showing interest to become drivers, but they have yet to turn in their applications. So we'll just keep asking for that on our radio spot. As, as you never know when a volunteer is going to say, I'm a voluntary. So we may need more people currently with have, having five, we're good.
That's always been kind of a challenge for the office.
It is. It's always a, a rotating possibility. You have somebody here today and tomorrow they have a health concern. They can no longer be a volunteer. Okay, well, move on. Thank them for their service because they've provided a great service to people. So um, the Cottington County Veterans Council will meet tonight. They'll vote on the uh, two thousand twenty five Veteran of the Year. And that'll be then provided and and announced on Veterans Day. Okay? Probably the biggest thing that we have happening right now in our office is the government shutdown. We're all aware of. We have veterans stopping in or veterans calling in asking, you know, are, are you open? We remind them that we're a county entity. We're not federal. We don't work for the VA directly. We work for them to submit claims to the VA. Um, the VA is still accepting claims. They're still processing claims. They're still providing healthcare. They're still providing what you might say is essential services. So we just remind them of that. Make sure that they know that there are one eight hundred numbers for crisis. Different, diff, different types of opportunities for them to seek assistance if needed. There are a couple of departments within the VA that are closed and we, we let them know that if, if that's the case. So in the future here tonight, as I already stated, we'll meet with Cotting County Veterans Organization commanders. And then on Thursday this week, we'll have our radio spots both at KWAT and KX, KXLG. Eric is currently working to get his uh, access card, his PIF card, so he can get into the VA's system. Well, we didn't realize this when we hired Eric. I don't think it would have made a difference, but he worked for the Department of Energy out at WAPA. And so he had a PIF card to get into their system, which is a federal system, right? But now he needs a different one to get in this other federal system. He couldn't apply for the new one until he was done with his job at the Department of Energy. And so we learned this two months in. Um, he took the fork in the road offer and now he's available at the end of September, starting October one. So that'll move along here this net, this month. Um, there's two events occurring in November, both on the same day, October eighth, or excuse me, November eighth. Veterans and Military Appreciation Event at Joy Ranch from ten thirty to one thirty. And then there's a Red Leg Retiree Summit out here at the National Guard Armory on November eighth from one PM to four thirty PM. And Eric and I will attend both of these two events. The South Dakota Department of Veterans Affairs Secretary will be attending the second event at the, at the readiness center. So we'll have an opportunity to meet with him and see how things are going at that level as well.
Just so you know, red light means it refers to field artillery. So that's, that's, since that's not sure either, that's it.
That's a big deal.
It is a very big deal.
To Eric and I, we're both red legs. So and so was Todd. So it's a big deal for the servicemen. Um, that's my report for today or for this month. If you have any questions, I'm open.
Just, just on the, on the certifications, um, that uh, is Steve?
Eric?
Eric, Eric used to go through.
Yes, um,
that's, it's pretty, it's pretty involved. I mean, the, the, obviously submit all those claims. I mean, that's pretty complicated. Um, it's, 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 it's not, it's not an easy thing to learn. So.
It's not an easy thing to learn and, and you know, we continue to push to learn more every day. Um, we have people stopping in just yesterday. He was, even without having the credentialed services through the VA, he's, he's doing the research online to get the answers for, for the dependents coming in and whatnot. So it's great to see his progress and.
It's just a steep, just so people understand, it's a steep learning curve because, because you're doing a very complicated system.
And we branch over to other questions such as DFAST.
Yeah.
You know, the military pay system for all the military and their dependents when the veteran passes. So that's another piece to it that most people don't think of.
GI Bill questions as well.
A lot of GI Bill questions as well. And Eric's very, very well versed in those. So it's good.
Jay, how's the new office working out over there on Nineteenth Street?
It works great.
Good.
Please stop by and visit.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
As Randy and Lee and Ryan F. Um, please stop by and visit. I mean, being located near the VA clinic is huge. I mean, we get more referrals from that VA clinic than we could ever imagine, I think. But again, that comes with an understanding that that VA clinic serves the upper northeast corner of the state.
Right.
So let's be real. There are a lot of counties in the northeast corner. And again, for the easy answer, they will hand our business card off to veterans needing enrollment into the VA um, for healthcare. Which yes, we can help them, but also they should go back to their county as well.
Good.
Um, so it's a delicate, it's a delicate uh, thing to master. Who do you ask to go back to their county? Maybe somebody that's enrolled in the VA healthcare, has experienced filing a claim with the VA, but they're wanting to file another claim. Maybe they could go back, but the person that's never been enrolled in the VA healthcare, maybe they need a little bit more assistance.
So just one more step in the information though, which is good.
Yeah.
You know, informing the vets what, what's available for them. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'll be over later.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks, Jay.
It's a nice looking office. I drive by it every day. Okay, let's move on to item number. Where are we at? Number eleven. Discussion possible action to approve striping for courthouse parking lot. And you should have those in your packet. It's like we have a couple of bids in there.
Yes, she should.
Morning.
Good morning. Yes, you should have a couple of them. Um, let me get to the right set.
Where did it go?
Quite a variation in pricing too.
Quite a variation in pricing. I have gotten two um, quotes since I went out. One from T and J Parking Maintenance out of Watertown here. Um, and the other one is Prairie Painting. It is out of Brookings. Um, both quotes, one quote from TJ Parking for the courthouse parking lot is nine hundred dollars and ninety two cents. And a quote from Prairie Painting is three thousand two hundred and two dollars and eighty cents. I will take note though, from Prairie Painting, they do have estimates to do a double coat. So that, so that's kind of almost probably why the price is there yet, but still yet. My recommendation would be is from TJ um, Park, um, Parking Lot Maintenance, because even if it's it's still yet less than. Because even if it's, it's still yet less than, um, for having it done twice.
Even if he doubles his.
Yes.
Still less.
Still less.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by McElhaney, second by Johnson. Any discussion? That's for the courthouse parking lot.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now let's move on to the extension building.
All right, I also have quotes from the same two, um, companies. Um, the one TJ Parking Maintenance, um, quote for that, and this is, uh. In combination with the Cooks, um, Parking Lot, um, the last time to note, the last time that was done. The city had taken care of that portion. This time, um, it was requested that I, that we take care of it this time. Um, so from that, um, TJ Parking had quoted six thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. Prairie Painting was thirteen thousand, fifty-six dollars. Now, a little side note, if you doubled that, it'd be probably a little bit higher with parking, but, um. Most of, uh, Prairie Painting mostly is the painting and, and additional paint. So my recommendation still would be is do TJ Parking.
Okay.
Lot maintenance.
Second. Motion by Gable, second by Schwer. Any further discussion?
They get it this fall.
Yes, um, that was one note and so we had that Prairie Painting didn't know if he could get it done this fall or if it won't be until spring. So. Yep.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Steve.
Let's move down to item number thirteen now. This is action to approve computer equipment purchases for the Director of Equalization's Office. Shauna. Good morning.
Perfect timing.
Kind of like you were watching us.
It's such a long, long ways to travel.
Such a long ways to travel. Okay, this is just a request for some updated, um, daily computers in our office. All of our computers are on a rotating schedule, um, and this year, um, we're in need of two.
And it's in your budget too.
They are budgeted and like I said, it's reoccurring, I think, once a year. Maybe skip one or two. I don't know.
Second, motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number fourteen. Item number fourteen is a mileage rate change for elected officials. Brenda.
All right, yes. So this has not changed for many, many years. Currently for non-elected, it's seventy cents per mile. So now, starting October first for elected. It is also going to be seventy cents per mile. So we will be the same as non's. That is a nice, um, update.
Who sets that policy? Is that, is that a legislated one or?
Um, I believe so.
Must be.
Department of Executive Management, Bureau of Finance.
Okay. They're not shut down. They're still working.
That's, that's state.
All right, uh, just, uh, what's that?
How about the elected officials? They had a different rate.
For seventy now, yes. Elected and non are both seventy. The non did not change because that has been seventy. It was just elected that changed. So.
Does it cost more if you're not elected than if you're elected? Really?
Yeah.
Wow. All right.
Yeah, I wonder what prompted that. I'm not sure.
That's what it is. All right, item number fifteen. Let's keep trucking here. Note, uh, Native American Day, Cottonton County Office closures.
Correct.
Which is Monday.
Monday, yes, October thirteenth. So an observance of that, the courthouse and all county offices will be closed.
So noted. Action, uh, to approve abatement applications. Number sixteen, seventeen, claims for payment.
We have, uh, the salary claims for September. I gotta remember what month I'm in here. Um, in the total amount of eight hundred, fifteen thousand, six thirty-eight, fifty-seven.
Move to approve.
Motion by, uh, McElhaney to approve, uh, second by Schwer. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Motion carries.
Nothing for eighteen.
No budget supplements. Number nineteen, uh, action to approve personnel changes.
We have two. Uh, the first one is Jennifer Hertenman. In the Treasurer's Office, uh, Administrative Support. Her effective date to start is October eighth. She will start at step one, twenty dollars and thirty-one cents an hour. She's a new hire. And then we have Brady Sanquist. He is, um, a, um, new hire as well. Full-time correctional officer in the jail. Ten-one was his, um, start date at step one, twenty-five, eighty an hour.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Johnson, uh, Gable, second by McElhaney. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moves on to item number twenty. This is action to approve travel requests.
We have one. Community service will be going to a summit. You have all the other details.
It's a budgeted item.
Yeah.
So move.
Motion by Schwer, second by Johnson. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioners, we're on to item number twenty-one. This is public notice of a possible quorum. Commissioners could be in attendance at. This week. Do you have the WDC meeting? Uh, that is, uh, not until, I believe, the fourteenth.
Yeah.
Next week. It's the annual meeting at Second Street Station, but that's not this week. It's next week. Put that on your agenda.
Now there's the Government Affairs meeting tomorrow morning. Um, also, I think I'm the only Navy vet in town. But, uh, we're celebrating the Navy's two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, and that's on Monday, the thirteenth. Uh, I think I'm the only Navy vet.
I think I heard of the Navy. In town? It's gonna be a load link event.
There's a few more. Yeah, there's a few more of us. I'm not the only one.
Okay. Well, good.
In my mind, I'm the only one.
Yeah. Thank you for your service. All right, uh, item number twenty-two, old business. Anybody have anything for the old business?
Sure, just give a quick update on the jail very quick. Uh, so. We had, so every two weeks, we, or twice a month, not necessarily every two weeks, but twice a month, we'll have a, uh. Owner, owner architect contractor meeting. It's mostly on teams and, um. I think from time to time, it'd be good for another commissioner to join, just to get a sense for what it, what it is with, just to, just. Uh, you know, we can keep it to two commissioners for forum rules, but, um. Um, it's a teams meeting and, uh, the quick update is still working through, you know, all the, all the different little details that they need to, to address the soil. The specific, the specifics of the soil out there for the footings, before they pour the footings. The rebar is on site for, um, the, the central part of the jail. So that's the part that's kind of between the housing area and what's going to be the sheriff's office. So we're all the, a lot of, probably the most complicated. Apartment and part of the jail, um, with the different rooms and such. Um. The, uh, so the, 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 the trick is to look at, is that there's a lot of clay in the soil out there. So, and that expands and contracts, so they have, so that determines like how deep they need to go, what kind of, what kind of, you know, how big they need to make the hole. And then what to fill it with, um, before they actually start pouring. So they're just working through, that's probably primarily what they're working through at the, at the moment. Um, and then, uh, so it's, just so people know, so probably in the next week or so, they might start pouring. Um, there is a possibility that, uh. We just touched on that. Some of the footings might need to go very deep, just to make sure, you know, there's a need to, with some of them to go down to the, uh, to the frost line. So, um, just to make absolutely sure you're not gonna ever have an issue with heaving. So, so that's something that they're, they're working through right now. So.
Okay.
And I had to explain to my wife, they work and work so hard to get that thing just as smooth as a baby's butt. And then they go in there, they dig, oh, dig it all up again. That's, that's construction. That's the way that works.
Yeah, yeah. We just thought, if you, if, I mean, commissioners want to go take a look, um, Mitch is, is a site supervisor, so he can. He can explain that stuff to you. Uh, so.
Can you send those, uh, meeting dates and times out?
Yeah, yeah.
To us and.
Yeah.
It's basically, we'll try and jump on one of them.
The first, that's Thursday. So I want to say the first is third, so it's the first and third Thursdays of each month typically. I want to say. So we just did one.
Yeah, I'd be happy to sit in and run. I, I go out there pretty much every day, just, uh, just to drive by and see if, see if they're working.
Oh, they're working.
They're working.
Make progress.
But yeah, it's the, I mean, it's the foundation portion.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got it right. So.
Not really very exciting.
Um, all right, any more old business? New business? Anything for new business? Anything for the open? Public comments? Anything for the open? Commission comments?
You know, I mentioned when Jody was in here about that old ice arena where, I think, Ben, Brenda, are you on that committee or? Where are we at with that anyway? I, I, when I get, you know, I get, um, questions and concerns from. You know, four H members, you know, that, uh, realize the need for a place for the shooting sports. And that's a tremendous growing part of four H. And, um. And, and we hear nothing about that. And, uh, that concerns me just a little bit. In that we're being left out or not.
Yeah, it's still in discussion stages, you know, with the city. They did their, um. Assessment of all their different recreational sort of things, you know, since that's kind of part of their property, actually the building. So the city's really involved in it with some of these other groups now that may utilize it. So it's still in the discussion stages.
And they also just, just, uh, says one part, they just hired a consultant, I think, or just a, in case you're consulting to do. An overall for all their, all their different city buildings. So that's like.
I'm pretty sure that if we wanted some representation on that, all we have to do is ask and get somebody on that committee. Probably wouldn't be tough at all to do. Um, it's just a matter of approaching the city with that and. Doing it, you know, somebody from four H if they wanted to be on there. It sounds like, uh, we have somebody from four H on there already, according to Jody.
Uh, I, I think we do.
Was that?
I don't know. I don't.
Believe that's what she said.
I don't even know who's on the.
Yeah.
Committee.
Yeah.
It's a moving target, pretty much.
Well, let's zero in on it. How about that?
All right, uh, anything else for the, uh, open commissioners? If not, we do have a need to go into executive session this morning, uh, for the purpose of. Allison, help me out here. Is this, um, contract? Contract negotiation.
What would be on exec session for contract negotiations?
That's correct. Number three.
Number three.
So we have a motion by Johnson going exec, second by McElhaney.
There any other needs or is that just?
Oh, uh, there should be.
Natalie did say she needed an exec too, but I'm not sure. I think it was for contract. It was for contract as well. Personnel.
No, no action.
No action. No action. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now in exec. Thanks, everyone.